All right, it is, uh, the microphone here. It is six thirty, uh, December twentieth. At Town Hall Complex, we have a council work session called by Mr. Kane, Ms. Harperley, Ms. Mitchell, and Mr. Hall. And at this time, I would ask for your indication from Mr. Brown.
Ms. Brown? Lord, I thank you tonight as always. We represent to be in service of all fellow citizens. I pray, Lord, that we continue with this true spirit, be with us in guidance, wisdom, and understanding of you and your word and one another. I just pray that we take the time to get into this business, to open our minds to understand one another, understand each other's positions and statements. And I'm just asking this again, if you want to use a statement.
Stand for the pledge if you are here. But on this ground.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item four is a motion for to approve the agenda. Do you have a motion to approve?
Somebody.
Mr. Hall, can I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Brown, can you discuss it? District one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Four? This is to approve the agenda.
Yes. Thank you.
Uh, district five?
Yeah.
Six?
Yes.
Seven?
Yes.
Eight?
Yes.
And there are votes, yes. Passes. Item five is new business. Uh, we have three things on the agenda for this evening. Item A is a brief orientation for new members of the town council. Item B is discussion and review of monthly council package agenda. And item C is discussion contractual agreements for town services. Best down low, I'll trade over to one of the members who called the work session.
Um, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
My concern is being a new member, that I don't know how this body works. And because I'm a new member, I would like to be informed because I may have gotten the wrong impression from my first or second meeting with this board. So I need clarity as to how we operate. And that is seeing how decisions are made when we are not normally in a meeting or gathering or unified place or time or body to discuss what's on the agenda for one time to meet or what's in the packet that we get from the town manager. I have not perceived how this process is. And I would like to know what has been, is there a policy? Is there something written that can define how we operate? Not just something that I understand, Robert Sues would ought to understand the business that this body is supposed to be about. But I'd like to know how we are gonna come to a consensus about any given subject if we don't meet. That's why I wanted a work session. And I don't believe that we would need a work session every month. But I believe that there are issues that will come before us that should be discussed on my list before we vote on it. I cannot vote on something I'm not aware of. And yes, I get the packet. But as far as a body working together, I don't see that and I don't understand why it's not. Can you address that?
Um, yeah, I'm, in our former government, the manager makes the agenda and puts the packet together, staff does it, so your first point contact would be, or any questions you have about the packet would just be the manager, contact the manager and get clarity.
But is it not true that the manager is not supposed to call the council members before meeting and tell them what they want them to do?
That's not a...
Exactly.
No, it's not, that's not true. I mean, there's no...
It's true, but it's not supposed to be true.
Well, the way I would look at that, I would think that a council person, had something on their agenda that the manager put out, that council person could call them out.
Exactly. If that council person has to push, but not just to call that council member and tell them what to do or what to say on the council.
I agree with that.
So, Mr. Mayor, but how the packet that we see, I understood you said, Mr. Luckadoo had told me that early, that he put it out. I understand that. But when is there a discussion of a more unified board about the packet?
At the meeting, at the meeting.
At which meeting?
At the council meeting and the business meeting.
I haven't seen that prior to becoming elected. I would only, I'm accustomed to seeing an approval of the agenda and then they read off what the new business is or old business and then they're supposed to vote. How can, where is my input? How do I know what her district is thinking?
You can't.
Oh, I'm not, we, we don't work...
We're supposed to have, we're supposed to have work sessions in some of these stuff out before.
You can, you can, you're absolutely, you can call anyone you want to know, council.
Well, we're not, I'll, as much as...
If you want, if you want a lot of opinion, you can get part of the opinions.
Okay.
But why don't we have the work sessions to get the opinions?
And you can, the one thing that you can't do is get five people together.
Excuse me?
You can't get a quorum of the council together. That's considered a meeting.
Nor can you do it sequentially.
So, what I'm saying, Mr. Mayor, is, I guess the question I raise again is, when does council sit together to go meeting before the monthly meeting on the second Monday after, in the morning?
Unless, since type of an item, they're not, like, you've gotten together before about the water project, we have gotten together, talked about, we've had work sessions in the past about certain things. And so, if it's a briefing, briefing items, this doesn't, isn't necessarily all the questions can be answered by the...
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, when did we start doing run the council like that? We've always had a work session prior to...
Go ahead.
How long have you been on here?
Six years.
Okay, I've been here for twenty.
I know.
Okay, so we, we, what?
For the sixteen eleven year, we've had, we've had work sessions.
Yeah, that's the problem, that's the problem.
Whenever, I'm arguing, you're asking me a question, I'm answering your question.
Okay, so we, we need to be able to sit in a room like this, Wednesday before our council meeting, so that everybody knows what they are, what they're voting on. And you don't, it is invisible. Cause we don't know what Teddy told Barbara, we don't know what Betty told Barbara, we don't know what Barbara told Betty, right? So, everybody's got different information. It takes a few minutes, Wednesday before council meeting to go over the packet, this is what's in there. If you have questions about the white paper, you should be able to have a chance to answer it, ask it, get it answered. And then when you come to council meeting, we don't have two minutes to go discussion and then we have vicry going on, cause you're trying to understand something and you get to only speak for twenty minutes on it. The council meeting is not the place where a council makes the decision. The work session is where you gather the information, then you go to council meeting and then, after you have your say in the work session, and it comes up for a vote, you vote yes or no, and you keep it moving. But what we've been doing is trying to do business at the council meeting and it's getting to be chaotic and people don't like it. It's ugly and people don't like it. So, and if people don't wanna come to a council meeting, I mean, to a work session, you don't have to come, if you don't need the information, you don't have to come. But we shouldn't have these meetings, it's not fair to the new people to put this contract in front of them with no explanation. It's, I mean, no council works like that. Every council has standing committees and, most councils have standing committees and they have work sessions so that people know what they're voting on when they get there.
Mr. Mayor, when I first started, I didn't know business, and I still do.
You have a opportunity.
If I need to know something, I call you, I call Teddy, I call whoever, and say, explain to me. So, yes, you have enough time to ask questions if you do not understand it. Yes, you get a packet. So, yes, you look at it. If you don't understand it, then call and ask questions.
Yeah, but how do you know that Teddy's telling you the same thing he's telling Betty?
I don't.
Okay, that's the whole point. That's, that's, that's my point, is that we don't know what's being said and who's, who's saying it to them. And we don't know if he's telling you one thing and telling Shirley another thing. So, we sit here together, we, our council together, we sit here together, and we talking out.
Well, I hadn't had anybody to tell me any different than what's laid out in the meetings.
We don't know.
Well, I got a question. Why is that necessary? You call a man, ask a question, if you have a question, why is it necessary for everybody else to know what you had a question about?
Well, it depends, it depends. If you, if you talking about a contract like this, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so I might have a question that's a very good question that you might be interested in knowing the answer to, and, but you didn't think to ask, right? So this might give you some additional information, or it might not. But you, we, we should all have the same information when we walk into council meetings so we can make a proper decision, that's all. I mean, is that crazy? Or, that's how, that's how council used to work.
Mr. Mayor and Lord members, council members, I believe that we are here for the betterment of the people of Batesville, not with an individual agenda. I don't know, and you may say, well, you're big, no I'm not. I don't know who's in, where district five is, I don't know where district three is, I don't know where one is. You say, well, get out of line, I can ride all day, Jeeves, somebody have to show me. I don't know where they are. So therefore, I do know that there are differences in the socioeconomic categories of the community of these eight districts. So, whenever something is being done, for instance, when the trees were trimmed by Dominion, I didn't know what was happening when it stopped at Rawls Drive and didn't come any further down, is I know where, uh, into, but it's called Semin Town, down two forty-five, it just stopped at Rawls Drive. And we have trees that have wires all hooked in them. And I understand that they're gonna go to another, uh, districts, other districts in twenty twenty-four. And you say, well, how do I know? Well, it was, someone was on committee. And so, but we don't, and maybe you all knew that.
Well, it's just DOT handed the math over and said, this is what they're doing.
Okay, and there was some information that was available about where they were and where they would go the next time. So, my concern was, if that, not only for that, but other air issues that would affect the town of Batesville, not just what's over on the, the south side of Lee Street, not just what's on Main Street, Lee Street. So, Ms. Barbara, I feel that if we can come together and hear what's being disseminated before we get to those seats on those Monday nights, then I feel I'd be better prepared to vote. I, I, I need to have understanding, and all of that getting, get understanding. I don't know, so I don't know, I don't know how we expect to do the best for our community as a young man, just pray, when we can't, can we come to get together at least every other month? Like I said, if there are issues, then when we get the packet, then we have a work session that month, we can talk about it before time to vote on it. That's my issue, that's my concern. And I feel that we, as a body, working together and unified supposedly, that we will together. Mr. Mayor, you gotta, if the president has a cabinet, they do come together at some point in time. So, other than the time for, there's a need to pass along. So, that's what my concern is, we come together for it. And when I first got on council, we did have, we did have work sessions. So I don't know what Lancer is talking about, because we did have work sessions. So, I don't know why they stopped, but we did have them. So, is it possible that we could come to a consensus or come up with a projected time? I know, Mrs., we had put out several dates prior after this day. Hopefully, that all of us could attend and I, Ms. Barbara said she didn't know for sure. But I cleared my calendar so I could be available. Therefore, if we could do that, it would help me. And I believe, and I pray that it would help us as a body representing this town, especially when you wanna do the right thing for the town. So do we have to, do we need to? Well, we already got three proposed, two other than tonight, so...
Yeah, and these, the work sessions are not mandatory. So, if, if four council members feel like they wanna have a work session, any four members can have them, and the other members are not required to be there.
So, who chairs the meeting, Mr. Mayor?
Well, if it's only four, you don't, there's not a quorum, it's not an official meeting of the town, but...
When there's a quorum?
When there's a quorum, then either the mayor chairs, the mayor pro tem, or the body of five would vote for, you know, someone to chair the meeting, the work session.
So if we had questions for the town manager and he were not here, what then?
You probably need to tell him.
No, I said, I said, if he were not here, I know tonight he couldn't be here, but you're here.
Yeah, Ted's the CEO and Ted runs the day-to-day operation of the town in our former government.
Right, but who gives Ted directions? Who gives Ted directions?
Supposedly be the council.
Right, okay.
Supposedly the council, but Ted makes his own decisions.
He don't make his own decisions, it's a couple of people here that involve him.
But go ahead, Bob. He, he has the day-to-day, he knows the day-to-day. He sends out the weekly report, which gives an update every week of what's happening on his schedule and on in-town. If, if you're not receiving that, you should be receiving that on your district email.
I don't have a district email, it doesn't work.
Okay.
I, I get it, I get it. I get what I get from Mr. Luckadoo, but the district email could, would not, I could not access it and my nephew is a computer engineer, it did not work. I don't, I wonder if it doesn't work, but I don't have that.
Bring your laptop or your phone up here and the...
I really don't want that on my personal phone, because this is a business for the town.
Sure, sure.
And I don't want that on my personal.
Okay, then probably just talk to Ted and see how, how best to communicate that information to you and they can forward the district emails that come in to, to another email address perhaps, or something, some way to get that to you.
District emails, is that the one, the, what you're talking about, the weekly report?
It's official, yeah, it's a weekly report from Ted, he sends these through those.
Well, we have agreed right now that until I get another piece of equipment, we're trying to decide what I wanna get. We, he will have had it printed and I get it, I'll be glad.
That'd be great, yeah.
I think I was the mailman last month, so.
There's a lot of information in there, you know, on a weekly basis that he sends out and everyone gets the information at the same time and on Thursday afternoon at five o'clock.
I've seen it and I've read it.
On Friday afternoon at five o'clock, but...
And, um, yes, I understand you all get that same information. So, I, I guess what we are now is that we have two meetings scheduled for twenty twenty-four. So then, that, I believe my question has been answered, it has just been touched the surface, but it's good. And so, if, if, I'm good with the fact that we are gonna have two more work sessions. And that way, I believe I will be well informed about what is going on. And I still say that I, I would love to hear from a different district when we are unified, when we're here together, because otherwise, I don't know if there's an issue in her district or Mr. Wise's district that we all should be aware of, or what is gonna affect the town overall as far as the total population of the town. That's my concern. And when I ran for this office, that's what I was constantly saying, I want to be the voice of the people, but in order to be the voice of the people, I need to know what's happening in here so that I can give accurate information. I don't want to disseminate incorrect information. Does that make sense, or is that asking too much? To me, it's, it's a good, a well-rounded question. And we can work together, I know we can. We're not anybody in here four years old. We can, we can work together and we can see each other's differences and we can agree, I believe, to disagree and still be civil and still be friends. I, I've got to get to know all of you, so I'd like to get to know you by coming here and saying, well, I go to this church, I live in this area, just everyday conversation. Okay, I'm good. Thank you, thank you.
She have a tablet. A tablet?
Mm, yes.
That's what I have mine, that's what mine is, is on my, it's not on my phone, it's on my tablet, I don't wanna come into anything personal. My sister works with me, yeah, we have an Easter.
I get the information. I just, at least. I'm good, Mr. Mayor, that's my concern. Thank you all for listening, for hearing. And one thing about me, I will speak of, and if it's something that I don't understand, I'll ask. And if it's something that I totally disagree with, you will know it. If I agree with it, you definitely will know. Thank you all.
I, I, I wanna, before we move on, come on, I thank you for bringing that up. And you almost there for me, you kind of tiptoed around the people and that's who we're working for, is the people, right? And I agree with you. Now, I'm all for sharing ideas and opinions of the councilmen, but I'm also looking at my opinions of my constituents and my district and the town, so let's don't lose focus of that, now we, you know, we, we're working for our districts, as both.
That's why I need to know what is...
Yeah, and you almost said it, that's what I was thinking, just reiterate.
I'm all about the test of people. I'm all about the people, that's all I'm here.
Right, we want to share information.
As long as I have been on council, I have never come to a meeting where everybody told what their district needed or what was going on in their district. I've never been in a meeting and heard that. Never. So, when do we do that, Bob? I mean, uh, when do we do that, Mr. White?
I guess that would be time for, for work sessions, Bob. I'm not against work sessions, I'm, I'm a bitch. But Cheryl, we are, we also, we used to do that. We used to have each council person have like three minutes, say what's going on in their district. You can even acknowledge people from the district. And it didn't go on with, with the meetings, but we, the meetings have gotten more streamlined than ever. But like I said, that might be a good thing to do in the, in the work session.
And that'd be a lot of things wrong in every district, I mean, all of them. And district five and eight, it's a lot of stuff needs to be done. And I ain't never seen district eight, uh, men, um, council member down there unless he was going down there for votes. So, I think work session would really be good, because people need to voice what's going on and what needs to be done. You, like you said, like Betty said, you're working for people, not, not each other in this council meeting.
Thank you.
So what we, what we do should be to help people, not, not us. But so, but since I've been on council, that's all I see, us, me, me, me.
All right, are we off the agenda, are we still in order here? Open to dominant orientation?
Council package is not due till July sixth.
The other thing, while we on this, I want to, the other thing that I wanted to, I think they passed this out, is that once upon a time, council had standing committees and the council members chaired the committee, we have a subcommittee, and they came to report every month to, to council. Somehow we got to EDA, Comit, Joint Municipal, and those were the only things that we talked about. And those things basically have more to do with outside of the town, more so than inside of the town. And so, at some point, council needs to, to visit or revisit having standing committees so that we get an understanding, a thorough understanding of what our CEO is doing and how our, how the, the town is, is, is running. You know, so at some point, and I, I spelled this out pretty, I think pretty badly, but at some point, we need to take a look at it and consider going to, to committees so that, or at least have the committees report. And they don't have to be chaired by council, they can be chaired by individuals. But this is the way that we get to know thoroughly what's going on in town, not Comit, not Joint Municipal, not EDA that rarely meets. We need to really consider that.
Just as a question being due, standing committees aren't done anymore?
No, there's no oversight. If you mention oversight, I believe the response is micromanaging, is that the comment? Mr. Mayor?
I have no comment, Mr. Hall. I just want to...
Well, then your memory is failing or else I'm senile, all right? But we addressed, I mentioned oversight and you said that would be micromanaging, all right? Mr. Luckadoo is an employee of council. Now, of course, our learned attorney will tell you that council is five members and without five members, any one of us sitting in here has no authority. And to my most learned, uh, council member from district four, be very happy to sit down and give, and give you my version.
These standing committee, they once were in place? Is that what I'm understanding? But not since when?
Many communities, many communities have oversight committees, all right? In fact, our, our national government has an oversight committee and so does our legislature and, all right? So does the county council have committees that are responsible for oversight, all right? After all, we have employees and there has to be some management of said employees.
So, these committees are being, were in place at one time at some point?
I, there has not been a committee in place other than a quote, H-Tax Committee that was quote, sort of semi-official, since I've been on council, so I cannot address that issue.
They, they don't, and that, that, that committee doesn't matter. Just work. But, to answer your question, we used to have committees and particularly when Cecil was, was mayor, when Rita was mayor, and, and when Wiz became there, they, him and David Williams kind of took the reins, so to speak, and they kind of shut a lot of things down because they were working on that water project. So a lot of the committees got scaled back and then all of a sudden we didn't have committees. And, uh, the committees are good, it's, it's good for Tandy, it's good for council, it's good for the community, because we, everybody's, we're, we're responsible to, like Paul said, to our constituents. And it's almost embarrassing when, when they know more about what's going on in town and what's... And it's always embarrassing when, when they know more about what's going on in town and what's covering the town than we did. And then when you call Teddy, he's like, well, you should, you could've called me, I wouldn't have told you. Well, my constituent told me. It's kinda embarrassing, so, but anyway. We are responsible to our constituents and we do have oversight over the, the operation of the town.
So, Mr. Mayor, is the, um, I don't know who, is someone in, opposed to having an oversight committee? Why don't we have this, these committees?
I'm, uh, I'm not prepared to talk about anything on committees. Who's buying council, like maybe can't make law, maybe can't make rules or anything like that, council. Everything comes back to council or vote, so, I mean, I'm, I'm not prepared to talk about anything about committees.
My question was, oh.
Nothing, I guess, I'm not, from this agenda, I'm just scared to think about it and work on what we need to see. So I'm just not prepared to answer your question.
So wait, what do you got to answer?
For what, what's the question?
For my question, whether we are in opposition to this or why is it that we would not have these committees in place?
I've gone on for, against the tablet committees, but I would have to find out more related about it. I can't explain if somebody would ask me a question, I can explain why they're in committee.
Well, it's strange.
As long as I've been in town, there has never been a committee in this town. And that's going back, back, no, not that I have been here.
When Rita was here, we had committees, cause I, yeah, we had committees.
I'm sorry, Mr. White, I'm just gonna disagree with you. Because in my opinion, until council votes to give somebody of your party to investigate, nobody of your party to do it. There's a town ordinance that says this body can say, we want this investigated and we're naming this person. Can I finish answering the question?
But the committee, committee does not investigate. You're going off on something that we not even talking about.
There is a town ordinance that can set up a committee to investigate something.
We don't need to investigate.
We don't, we don't talk about investigating. We, we talk.
You're talking about oversight. What is oversight? Is investigating to make sure somebody's doing their job correctly?
That's your interpretation of it. That's not my interpretation. And my interpretation of it is right.
I didn't hear you argue.
No, 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 we're talking about committees by council, not committees for investigating.
Since I have been in town, it has not. I respectfully disagree.
Well, I know, cause I was on council when Rita was here and I know it was.
And Rita was mayor after Wiz, not before.
Well, the past is in the past. We have the people in the current operation. And we're looking forward to a bright future for Batesburg Leesville from what I understand is happening with a lot of urban development around here. So if we're gonna still be in this town, and I believe some of us still plan to stay here as, as this being our place of residence. I don't believe that we're gonna dwell on, I don't see that we should dwell on what happened when Wiz was the mayor. What, what we'll do now is pick it up from right here where Mayor Shug is in office. And we can come together with, again, a unified consensus. That we could either do some oversight committees or we look at what else could be done if we didn't put it in place. Does, will that cause us to pass out? I think we could work, I hope we can work together on, on these things. No one is trying to destroy the town. No one is trying to take anybody's office. We just want to be able to say that we, we represent Batesburg Leesville. That's all I, that's all I wish, okay? So we'll probably see this again. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions about the, you know, um, Dave, we kinda cut you off a little bit.
We kinda cut you off a little bit. On this, uh, I'm just, you know, I, I have not been, I've not followed the town government like I probably should have. I did more in Leesville whenever the towns were separate. And Leesville did have these committees and I know councils had that in the report when they did it. But Leesville didn't have town manager, the council did everything. Our government that we have now, we have a city manager or a town manager to do what committees did. That's why we hired him, that's why we paid him. And then whenever he comes back.
But with his counsel?
Counselors, hired the man. I don't know about the rest of it. I still work. I had got forty hours that I can give to the town every week to try to do that, cause I'm trying to run a business. I wanna do what I need to do, but I want somebody that's better qualified than me to run the town, to run the town. And then when I need to vote or whatever, I can, I have my opinion, I read my packet, I study my packet when it comes. And I try to make sense of it. And if I have a question, I call somebody and I ask them what they think or what it's supposed to be. That's how I work. I don't have a problem making a decision doing it that way.
So how do you know the information that you give is the, the correct information?
Well, I guess I don't, but I, you know, I'm just drawing on faith.
I, I didn't hear it, Steve.
No, I was asking, how do you know that the information is accurate? And that's, you know, this, this is the direction of the town, right? Because Teddy's doing the best he can to, to guide the town, but Teddy doesn't know everything. And if you, if Teddy don't put it on the table where Bob can chime in, you can chime in. They, you know a lot about water and, uh, and stuff, things like that, right? So if it's on the table, we can talk about it and we can share and, and if he's right, he's going the best direction, so be it. But if we can, uh, make suggestions, just like when we were in, uh, the exact session of, of Monday. The ideas that came up were different than what Teddy and Chris had come up with, right? But the input was, was positive, it wasn't negative. So all I'm saying is that if you don't, you, you might not have time to chair a committee, right? And we're not gonna put that on you. But that doesn't mean that, uh, other people don't wanna chair a committee and wanna gain information to bring back to council. And after all, that is our job.
So then, the standing committee, again, that would be something we'll.
Then we can discuss later, I just wanna put it out there so that people can see. And read for themselves what the, what the committees do, what their authority is. And they will just give a report back to the councils once a month. And many, many, many councils have committees. And it's not gonna take forty hours a week to, to, uh, to, of course, to lead a committee. We don't have to lead a committee. And we don't have to have all these committees. These are just, these are just options.
So there could, there'd be some in place.
Right, they're, they're just options. But, but most towns and counties that run traditionally, they have standing committees. And their people vote and they understand what they vote on, cause what we vote on impacts people's lives. In a big way, pocketbooks, in a big way. And I, I do believe that Teddy does bounce things off of certain council members. So certain council members have more information than other council members. And that's why we have a problem in the council meeting where everything is contentious. Cause people don't have all of the information at one time.
Divide and conquer.
Well, we need to stop that because that's not fair to the citizens. When, when you see people sit up there arguing and trying to make a point on business that we shouldn't have discussed before we got it.
So then, again, this will be something that we'll look at along down the.
Yeah, that's right. At some point, we need to.
Yes, okay, well, I think we should at least get some more input and get some more information.
Yeah, I'm all, listen, I'm all for Ted being the CEO, but when you only have one side and there's other information that you report today that might make this idea better or show the flaws in his idea, make him go back and think about how you do it better. Every, how, every organization does that. Every college has a college board, they have, um, departmental meetings. Anybody that, that, that's worked in corporate America knows. You have some of these, you have subcommittees, you have ad hoc committees. Um, and it makes the organization run a lot more smoothly.
So are we now ready to go to discussion of your municipal council packet? Are you all there?
I'm here. Yeah, I'm taking, uh, he just.
Jay, did he go back yet?
The council's packet is not due until the Thursday before the meeting. The meeting is January the eighth. So if you back that up, uh, seven, six, fifth, fourth, packet's not actually due until January the fourth.
Yeah, so, and we, and we can revisit that too because we need to have more time to discuss things that's on, on the, uh, on the, that's gonna be in the packet and it's gonna be on the agenda.
So I was looking at what I got from, um, D seven eleven through fifteen. And I noticed that most of the items we have already discussed and we've had some addressing, uh, while we were in the last general session on the day or something. So, um, the only one I couldn't remember, and I, I might have heard somebody talk about the new town sign, entrance, entrance signs. Did we talk about that before?
There hasn't been any, other than the manager's weekly report, there hasn't been any movement on that.
So at some point in time, is this something we'll vote on, is already gonna approve? I don't, I don't understand.
The town council, we have approved a hundred thousand dollars for signage.
Yes.
The council has not seen, or at least this member of council has not seen where the signs would be located or other information.
I know that, I, when I read it, it's, you know, uh.
Of course, we don't operate by the Fourteenth Amendment.
New larger small town entrance signs along streets leading to a town of Batesburg Leesville? So am I to suppose that that could be down by Oswald's before you did that?
My understanding, ma'am, is that there are eleven locations.
Eleven?
Eleven, ten or eleven?
I don't think it was that many, but I, I don't have that on.
Significant number. It's more than the three or four that is obviously, yeah.
It's about seven. It's about seven. Jay Ray?
Correct, yes, probably two.
It's about seven.
Seven times.
It's about seven. It's about seven entrances to Batesburg Leesville.
And they're gonna, what they've been talking about is putting it in the smaller roads, right? And that's what the other entrance signs are.
It's about seven.
Old Gob's first, uh, and the other ninety-three.
Well, we don't have thirty-nine-one, twenty-five.
Yeah, three forty-five.
I think Jay, he's gonna replace the two big signs. No, that, that wouldn't, that's not been talked about, replacing it. It'd be adding. I think, I think, I think Shirley's right on seven.
I remember when they did that, that's when that other guy was performing that. What, not then?
What's his name? Did he pass away?
It's, it's seven. I just, I just didn't know.
Somebody, McSwain. McSwain.
He did, he passed there, he's been a while, long time ago.
Terry McSwain. Used to be the chamber, yeah. And the lady that used to do our, um, council meetings?
Okay.
Sorry, no, yes.
Did someone, um, the US DOT Save Street and Road Grant Project, um, that's already in progress, right?
Everything that is on the manager's report is a report of current activities, ongoing projects.
I wasn't here at the meeting on Mon, on Monday, last Monday night. So what, who, who was elected and what played positions?
The mayor pro temp is Mr. Kraus. The, uh, E-PAC is, um, don't recall, Mr. Kraus. Mr. Kraus is still E-PAC. Mr. Bottin is Cog. Uh, did we do comment?
I'm commenting.
Oh, there was some comment. The only change is, uh, I came off Cog and Mr. Bottin is replacing me. Otherwise, that and the mayor pro temp is now Mr. Kraus.
Okay, so I'm going back to the save street, whatever, on here. And I know this is DOT, but somebody please explain to me.
Can we, can we pick up that later and stay on the agenda?
Stay on the agenda.
Yeah.
I think that was the packet, we talked about the packet.
So?
Yeah, we talked about the packet.
Well, my question is, the previous packet or the new packet?
We don't have the, the weekly report, right? Not the, not in the, not in the agenda from last month.
No, this was on the, in our council packet.
He does a report and then he does the, uh, the agenda back in the name. Well, I mean, he, he gives us a weekly report, right?
Right.
And then it comes, it comes along with your packet.
It's separate from the packet.
But it's, it's things that are coming up to the agenda.
I printed what Teddy sent me and.
But why is that an additional?
Mr. Kraus, I want to say that if I'm off of the agenda, I will apologize. But from what I received on the fifteenth, so maybe I've gotten a confusion about what is which report. But I'm checking my phone because it was sent and I printed from my phone. And it was from Ted Luckwood and, um.
Ms. Betty, just for, just for clarity, the packet that I put in your mailbox that day?
Exactly.
That's the council packet, that's the, the one that you have in the email, that's gonna be that weekly report from Teddy.
Cause this is.
But this still falls under all your.
Well, I'm just, I'm just, just for her clarity, say.
Right, yeah, I mean, they, they wanna split hairs about.
I, I'm just trying to have.
I'm just saying, I'm not talking about you.
Uh, I was, I, uh, Mr. Kraus said stick to the agenda.
Well, I just, I wanna, it sounded like we were moving into other items that wasn't on tonight's agenda.
Well.
The orientation is on tonight's agenda and.
We're gonna spend six hours talking about everything that's.
Sir, we're not gonna.
Everybody don't have to say.
I have to be in church at seven thirty, so I'm not gonna be here all night. But I have a question. And if it's not, um, if I'm on the wrong page, it's not my intent. I didn't, I didn't come here to cause confusion. The, the DOT thing, this was noted, Save Streets and Roads, and my question. And I've talked with, um, some people and my concern is the traffic flow. Over by Starbucks Taco Bell Cookout, I heard on Showway. And I was told that the DOT says they can't put another traffic light there because it's too close. Okay, we've had two accidents of that there in this session. My question is, Mr. Kraus, Mr. Mayor, can someone from the authority over this region and territory of Batesburg Leesville speak, Jay, to DOT again? I understand they say it's too close, but what's more important, and I know they have their regulations and guidelines. Is it more important for someone to be killed before we put a light there? Or put something, if nothing but, I don't know if it can be made a four-way stop, but something has to be done there. And I just wanna know, my question was, who can address it?
Anyone, anyone in this room?
No, no, I mean, I mean, you know, above us, if it's somebody above us.
I'll give you Ms. Anchettis, uh, who is the rural, all right? And we fall in the SC DOT situation, we fall as a rural entity. We are not part of COGS or the metropolitan area. That stops at Cog's Ferry Road, then we fall under a rural. And they have an assistant secretary, no, she's a director for, uh, all rural projects. I will be happy to provide you that information and you can contact her. She's been very helpful. She used to be originally in County and, and so forth. But traffic situations, I've addressed the traffic situation at Hendrick Street. SC DOT has, if I may expound on that, SC DOT has been on a five-year plan for looking at situations like that. And they are now going to a two-year plan, but they can't turn anything around on a dime, all right? I mean, traffic pattern changed on Hendrick Street. I'm also concerned about the fact that that traffic pattern is gonna change dramatically with the new proposed housing development, uh, that's coming into that area.
with the new proposed housing development, uh, that's coming into that area. And that would obviously, under their rules, make traffic, uh, signaling at that intersection, uh-
Necessary, something.
Well, it's, under their rules.
That's, that's, where are you talking about?
Now, they'll put you one there if you wanna pay for it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, five hundred thousand dollars to install and then you pay the annual maintenance.
Mr. Bott, Mr. Bottine, you gonna say something?
I just, from experience in Hermo, where I grew up, where they put in traffic signs and it all got, had to go to this country. Well, they put in a traffic light and it's two roads that got over on number six where Salem Church and Farming Creek came into number six, almost impossible to get out. So they put up a light on Farming Creek. Most of the traffic is on, um, Salem Church, but they put the sign down there and when the, when they were out there, I was sitting there waiting for that twenty minutes one day and I asked the guy, the engineer was there, I said, can I just ask you a question? And he said, yes, and I said, why did you choose here? The answer I got there was that was where the most severe accidents happened. And I was the priority of it, and I said, well, what are you gonna do about all this traffic out here? They didn't, he didn't have an answer to that, said it was gonna be fine, well, it's not fine. But the problem is that those roads were very close together, someone appeared and it was too close, supposed to be five hundred feet apart or whatever. You can put a traffic signal there if you pay for it.
The town would have-
And, and the town of Hermo has since done that because they get so many complaints that people couldn't get out. Since I moved my business from over there, now it's a traffic light where I can get out. But, you know, and that's, they can have it, I don't, I don't want to be there, but that's-
Thank you, thank you all, thank you all for your input. I'm, I'm concerned about that because there's been two accidents, you know, uh, Jacob Watson was one in one of the accidents and I don't know the other one. So we don't want to wait until there's a, somebody put a marker there because someone was killed. So if, you know, you say it's gone down to a two-year now?
Yeah, so they're doing two-year looks at the, uh, traffic patterns, alright?
Okay, so we do a lot of praying for two until they hear the sound, thank you, thank you.
But, but, but two years to look at the pattern, three years to move and ten years out on the actual paving plan. It takes an act of God to move an item up. We might be able to talk to Mr. Dukes, who is our commissioner, and they, he may be able to do something.
And, um, just you mentioned the, the new, the development, um, we have to talk about that soon too, if we can.
We don't.
We can-
My underst- my understanding is that-
It's not.
It's not what?
Until it comes, until it, it comes from the, the-
It's not coming?
No, it's, uh, I mean, my understanding is that it's coming, yeah, but it's not, there's nothing that we have to hold on to.
But it's, it's, it's nothing that the council, except for the fact that we have no idea what it's gonna cost the town as far as, uh, infrastructure additions and so forth, which is within the purview of the council because we control the birth streams theoretically.
And it's going through the planning right now, so we do have something to do.
No, no, it's-
It's already cut, so the rest-
No, no, they only, they only approved the sketch draft, it's four approvals than this one. Well, there is something is also aware that they need to have, uh, two entrances. They're one house short from, from having two entrances, but the, the way that the property's divided, they can't have, I mean, you think about two hundred houses, uh, four, four people to a house, that's eight hundred people. And then you think about everybody, everybody, um, in the house, they have a car, it's eight hundred cars.
Two cars.
Or two cars.
The rule of thumb is two cars and two point five people per house. Two point five people per house per development.
So, even at any rate, you're talking about six hundred people, six hundred people in that Walno area that come out here in Walno or?
Well, in that area, Mr. Mayor, I know this is something that is in zone, but, um, that's a lot, there is a part, partic- particular part of that area, the State District Four. And, um, down the back end of Francis that goes into Bar, and I was concerned about the, the road back there. It is horrible.
Francis Road?
Francis Road, you get-
They gonna have to pay, somebody's gonna have to pay.
But then on Chesterfield Court coming off of Bar Street, it's a dirt road and, 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 and it's constantly washed out by rain, so, you know, I know this is coming.
Yeah, I haven't seen the, the way out, so this is the third developer that's approached the landowner to-
And what is, the land is sold after, right?
This is, this is, it's really not for us to do.
It is for us to talk about it, because we have to-
I mean, we can talk about it all we want, we can talk about it all we want.
Who's on, who's on my board and sue I?
I'm not trying to, no.
Who's on my board and sue I?
You can talk about it, keep talking about it.
I feel like I've got too much.
Keep talking.
We are so far off with food here, darling, we're volleying.
Okay, right, right, Chris, that's what they say, you know, they're trying something that, that's important, right? If we're talking about something, I'm not even aware of it.
Sorry.
And that's a problem though, you know, that you don't, you know, did you, did you, people tell you about this?
Well, everything can happen in a town.
Well, that's all we have any-
We have to wear that.
I think, I think we were on, we were on agenda, so let's, let's leave Chris, that's fine.
That's fine, I can, I can, so that's all right.
I have a question for the town attorney, if the agenda includes an item that says discussion of district issues.
That's way too broad.
Says who?
Says law.
No, because I already talked to you, um, okay, you, you, you know, but I talked to the municipal association. I talked to the municipal association.
I'm sorry, you don't like my opinion, but that's my opinion, I'm sorry.
Discussion of district what?
Now, y'all can, y'all can vote, I mean, some councils vote to put on the agenda that there is a period of time at the beginning of the meeting-
We're talking about work sessions. I think he's talking about work sessions.
They sit on the agenda.
I'm sorry, I'm talking about it.
So on, on the agenda, if you wanna do it each month, there's some councils that do it where-
You can al- but you can also say district issues discussion on the way.
Let me finish my answer, I'll see if, see if, see if it gets you where you wanna go. If there's something special going on in District One that Miss Brown thinks everybody wants to go, that some church in her district is having a, a festival that weekend, you can put on the agenda at the beginning of the meeting for each district to say, here's what's going on in my district, I invite everybody to come. Or this is what's going on in my district, just want y'all to know about it. There's no vote, there's no nothing, it's just informational, you know, little two-minute spiel that each person can do in their agenda. Y'all control the ordinance that says what's on your agenda. Y'all can vote to change that ordinance and add that to your agenda. That's exactly what we're saying, but nobody asked that question, I'm sorry, I'm being polite.
I'm sorry, Chris, but that's what, that's the worst thing that we were talking about.
So before, before the meeting, we can put on the agenda?
No, how many, amend the ordinance to put a section on there that says district reports.
So why, why is that not on there already?
Because y'all, the final county was including the district.
Wow, okay, we would put it on.
Y'all would have a, at some, at some point, not tonight, because we can't hold it there. At some point, y'all would say, Chris, we want you to rewrite this ordinance to add this to the agenda. And then all I do is rewrite it, y'all do your two vote, your two votes and it's our agenda.
And we were discussing and you were saying what else?
Nobody, I'm not going to freaking say a word because of what's going on until I can ask a question.
Okay, so are we on the last, uh, item C? Are we, have we passed that?
And it's up to y'all, I mean, I'm just saying, let's stay on, we're all, just like, y'all home, bro.
I guess.
Well, I just, I just had to ask, I didn't know. I didn't, I didn't know why we couldn't do it anymore.
We're gonna do the contracts now, but for you.
I didn't know what. Contract agreements for town services, did we have something on that file?
There's, yeah, but we have two, there are a lot of contracts that I would like, I personally would like for council to go back and take a look at. The two that are in front of you, you should have copies of, are the agreement, uh, with Joint Mutual for us to buy water and I, may I ask that there was a previous iteration edition of this contract that council was presented? And that's a loaded question because I have-
I don't, I don't know.
This is not, this is not the, uh, agreement that we had some time back, alright, and, and there is-
This is the agreement, so I'm assuming this is what we go and ask?
Well, it was signed back on, um-
What are we talking about?
Uh, two fourteen twenty-two.
Are we comparing?
What are we talking about?
We're talking about whether or not this is the original agreement, uh, contract that was presented to council. Has council ever been presented a different version of the Joint Mutual contract? The version that caused me to raise the issue of system number two.
This has been a further course.
I am saying that.
This is what was presented, this is, this is what was presented to council. Now, I'm sure there was several iterations that were gone through, but what always happens with all these contracts is we go back there, here's the contract, we got questions, let us know, and this will come in that room, we got loaded on. No changes were made between then.
I'm not, okay.
I mean, there are always iterations that are, that have changed through the process. I'm not gonna say anything, you were never given another iteration.
Okay.
But this is what council would-
Now, my understanding, this does not require us to tear down our water plant?
Nobody asked me to read the contract and give an opinion tonight? If you want me to read it, get it back to you today, I'm willing to do that, but I'm not gonna sit here and read this thing in five minutes and try to give you a legal opinion in five minutes, it's not happening.
We do have that little room.
Nope, when we go in that room, I'm ready to go because I've read it before I went in the room.
Wait, did you write this contract?
Two years ago, four year ago?
Oh, I just, I, I, no, I'm just saying, I just wanna be clear that you wrote it, so I understand what you're saying, you, you don't wanna be-
I don't wanna, I don't like gotcha moments, I'm not gonna be part of it.
I'm not playing gotcha, I just asked.
And I'm not giving you an answer tonight, you want an answer, I will, but you can get back to me. I, I don't, how much fairer I can be?
I'm not questioning it very much.
Okay.
You will get back to me.
If you want answer that, I will, if you like, if you require us to tear that off the water plant.
Whether or not it requires us to make our water plant totally inoperative. My concern for everybody, my concern with, if that is true, and it has been discussed in the past, my concern is what happens if Joint Mutual goes down, we have no agreements and we have no way to supply water to our citizens if there's a catastrophic problem with Joint Mutual.
I can't believe it's not in here about taking it down, because that's all we all said, take this down except Casey.
This was not continued, the project's not continued upon taking the other down.
I would think it does, since they hold your license.
Well, I would, I would put millions of dollars, millions of dollars to keep it, we put millions of dollars to keep it, you know, operational.
But if there is another one, you can mothball it.
I don't think the laws could even, the mothballs would even survive.
And the other, the other issue is with the ridge frame contract?
Before we go to ridge frame, that, you were, you were saying, Mr. Mayor, about when you were talking, I didn't, I was trying to answer.
I don't remember anything you mean here about us, and this, I don't remember having any, did you continue, I see it's all of us doing anything with our whole water plant, I mean, you know, we only have so much money to, you know, millions of dollars over there when we have a new water station. But it's not up for, really, that's not up for discussion.
But, but, that's to be thought on. All right, I just want to know what you, what you were saying.
Depending on that executive session, Teddy did say he was gonna tear it down. But so the question, the question was clarified, does the contract, does it?
I don't know.
Chris, just, I don't know, we should get too far into what was in the executive session.
But we also gotta be careful there, you know, we're gonna get in trouble.
I just want y'all to be mindful of what some of the stuff you're talking about with the district session.
Yeah.
I just want y'all to be mindful of what some of the stuff you're talking about with the district session.
Yeah.
How many, you gotta have operators, and if your operators aren't here, what are you gonna do?
Like I said, that'd be something we can talk about.
Again, I said, I'll tell you all, some of what y'all were talking about with executive session stuff is not completed yet. So I, I think it was ideas, I don't think that anything's been done on that.
Nothing's been decided.
I, I could be wrong, but I think that everybody learned about it back there, which means we shouldn't be discussing it now.
Well, I've talked with Teddy several times about it, but anyway, this is what I have to know.
Is it possible to get a copy of the original ridge frame contract?
Which contract?
The original ridge frame, the one that just rescinded.
Alright, do you want the original contracts or you want the, the, um, I think there was two or three?
The, the latest one, I think, was WIZ, I think WIZ.
It's because you got the original contract.
The one that just rescinded.
But what I'm saying is, there was an original contract that was done a long time ago and then there was two more contracts that changed some terms but not all terms, so you really need all of them to really see what was there before, what I'm trying to explain. You got the original contract, you have some modifications that extended time, then you have more modifications that extended time. So the original contract, some of the original firms stayed in place. So there's actually one contract and two amendments you need if you want to see the full picture of what was there, from my memory of what's there.
Now, this contract, okay, you, you have a copy.
We'll be getting our water from-
We're still making our water ready.
Exactly. So, the spring, I mean, they're no longer-
They're still getting water from us right now.
They're still getting it right now, but didn't they, but didn't they?
As part of this contract, they're buying water.
Can I, wait a minute, I'm talking, please, thank you. So, they're, they're, they're gonna change over to Saluda.
They, in my understanding, this is, I haven't seen the contract, I won't admit it. My understanding is Ridge Frame has signed a contract with Saluda where they are supposed to be in their water facility. And, and some of the discussions, their, 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 their water use from us dropped significantly. But it's not zero, it's still five or six million gallons a month, thereabouts.
Something, something added.
So they're still getting that from the-
They're getting, they're getting a portion of what they use.
My understanding is that, if you look at that, that is the, that is equal to the volume of water that Manetta is seeking and because there is a compatibility, because there is a compatibility issue between our order and Saluda County water, and so it's, or it would be on their best interest to provide our order to Manetta.
We're talking about this because it's executive session material and what you're fixing to say, we discussed back there last Monday night. We talked about water-
Okay, I'm sorry.
Chris, I have a question for you.
Thank you, of course.
This, 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 uh, contract we joined order, is it voidable?
Is it what?
Voidable.
At this point?
Yes. If it, if, 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 if some, if some entity found that it was inappropriate, is it voidable?
Any contract is then avoidable if there was criminal activity involved or if it was entered into with bad faith, but bad faith is a foreign firm.
Okay.
That's not-
You can talk to your legal counsel.
I'm sorry, I'm not offering legal advice. And I want that clear, that was not legal advice, that was an opinion.
All legal advice is an opinion.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
So all we've done with the discussion of the agenda, I-
Now, anybody else have any questions, the lawyer?
Thank you all for coming, thank you for taking time, making time to come, we, I, we appreciate it. And I, um, six, uh, somewhere there, and the, uh, quick shot, quick shot.
I do also thank, uh, everybody for their time, because this, this was important to me, I mean, just that, I wanna hear what people think and I wanna see what's, what the-
I do also thank y'all, everybody for their time, because this, this was important to me, I mean, this is, I wanna hear what people think and I wanna see what, what direction we go. And so when people ask us, we can act like we have, we understand, alright? I'll move that way, Jared, please. All in favor?
Yes.